If I may share my screen. And you can all see this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sure. So, good evening Chairman and Board. Like I said, my name is Steven Martini. I am an associate with Issuing Group. And I will be presenting the area in need of redevelopment preliminary investigation that has been conducted for what is the property known as Grace Episcopal Church, which is also identified as Block 837 Lot 1. So I'm going to go through this study just to give a little bit of a brief background. This is going to be a summary of the study that as you realize is available online and is not going to be the report in its entirety. Continuing the background, the City Council authorized the planning board to conduct this study. A resolution was passed by City Council on May 9th of this year. And the purpose and intent of this study is to examine the study area to determine if the parcel should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment based on the local redevelopment and housing loss statutory criteria, also known as ORHL. There are two types of redevelopment studies. One is condemnation and the other is non-condemnation. This study at hand is non-condemnation, which means that the powers of eminent domain are not being utilized. And further, our approach to this study was to investigate and evaluate the study area. I conducted a site visit on May 17th of this year, both internally and externally on the property. I went as low as below, I guess you call it the basement or below the foundation of the building. And as high, I went all the way up to the bell tower as well. And I went into every building, every room that we were able to have access to as well. Additionally, we researched property records that were supplied by city agencies. And from all this due diligence that we have performed, we determined if any of the ORHL statutory criteria could be applied to the study area property. And then at this time, I'm presenting the findings and we'll go through the recommendations that we have found through this study. So I'm going to briefly go through all of the statutory criteria that are outlined in ORHL, starting with Criteria A, that is that buildings that are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or lacking light air or open space. Criteria B, which is the discontinuance of abandonment of use of commercial retail shopping malls or plaza, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial buildings for a period of two years. And the abandonment of such buildings have fallen to such a state of disrepair that is untenable. Criteria C, publicly owned land or unapproved vacant land for a period of 10 years and not likely to be redeveloped through the instrumentality of private capital. Criteria D, which is areas containing buildings or improvements which are dilapidated, obsolete, overcrowded, or other deuterious conditions, lacking ventilation, light, sanitary facilities, and contain faulty arrangement or design or any combination of these factors that are detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Criteria E, which is underutilized properties caused by condition of title, diverse ownership, or other conditions resulting in stagnation of property not utilized to its full potential and value causing detriment to public health, safety, morals, general welfare. Criteria F, which is areas greater than five acres in size that have buildings or improvements that have been destroyed by natural disaster or other casualty resulting in material depreciation of the property. Criteria G, that the property is located within a city designated urban enterprise zone. And Criteria H, that the property is consistent with smart growth planning principles. There is also Section 3, which is that the property is included for effective redevelopment to occur. And that it is being designated even though it does not fulfill any of the criteria that is that I previously stated. So this is the study area at hand. As I mentioned, it's Grace Episcopal Church. It has street furniture on three sides, East 6th Street, Cleveland Avenue, and East 7th Street. It also has an address of 117 to 127 East 7th Street. Also, it's also known as 600 Cleveland Avenue as well for a secondary address. I'm going, I'm going to go through further details of the property and the valuation that we conducted regarding this property. And again, further from the evaluation, if we determined if any of the ORHL criteria could be applied. So further, as I mentioned, this is a Block 837 Lot 1 Grace Episcopal Church. It's zoned TODD transitional district. And is existing use, it was a former house of worship. And at this time, it's only being used as a soup kitchen a few days a month. Further regarding a brief timeline of the development of the property. The church was first built in 1892 and it was expanded in 1929 for the, for the council. And in 1957 for the parish church and kitchen. And then the memorial garden also on the property was added in 1968. The church is on the state and national registers of historic places and it's also identified as a city historic site. The church has not operated as a church for a substantial period of time. And as I mentioned, it's only used as being utilized on within the building or the site is, is as a soup kitchen. And I'm going to go through further the site analysis through photos that I took during the time of the site visit that that will show that the building, because it's not in use, is deteriorating. Or this is also due to its age and the time that it was constructed. And that other factors are also contributing, including accumulated debris on the grounds and and within, within the building as well. So these, these are some of the photos I took that show what is happening within the building. The photo to the left, that's within the main hall where services were conducted. As you can see, paint is peeling. There's substantial water damage and rain, rain damage from stormwater. And then also further from, from the rain damage that the paint is peeling and bubbling through walls, through the common corridors. And as I mentioned, debris is accumulated at various locations throughout the grounds. The, how do I put it? There's been a pattern of homeless individuals squatting or, I don't want to say congregating, but utilizing the property even though they are not, do not, they're trespassing. And then further from them spending time on the property, debris has accumulated over periods of time as they've left out, left trash behind and debris. And they've even broken into the building as well. I could show you through another photo. As you can see, the, the middle is the basement, which is also debris is accumulated and it's, it's, it's just in poor shape at this location. Further showing rain damage and missing ceiling tiles, accumulated debris. And then to, to the right, homeless have actually broken it through the top window and that's why it's boarded up at this time. Again, just showing the interior damage that within the kitchen and then other locations throughout the building. Similarly, damage within the basement and within one of the classrooms that were utilized as a classroom. And just again, showing other photos of the prop, of the building and property that I took during the time of the site visit. So based on, like I said, the due diligence that we conducted, the site visits, and the property records that were obtained and reviewing all the ORHL statutory criteria is my professional opinion, the criteria A has been fulfilled. This is because, as you can see, the bill, the conditions of the building are unsanitary, unsafe, and substandard. It's important to also note that within the four tiles there is asbestos, which is detrimental to and hazardous to human health. There was missing four tiles and ceiling tiles and as I showed extensive water damage. So without proper means of upkeep, the building will continue to deteriorate. Criteria D has also been applied based on the existing conditions of the building and site. They're in a state of dilapidation. As I mentioned, asbestos and mold are present within the building. And also, as I mentioned, there's accumulated debris and has remained there for stagnant for a substantial period of time. In addition to the other conditions I mentioned previously, bubbling paint and other, other damage to the building. And to that end, the site's conditions are detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Criteria G has also been applied as the parcel is within a city designated urban enterprise zone. And lastly, criteria H has been applied to the study area that it's consistent with smart growth planning principles because it's approximately 960 feet south of the downtown Plainfield train station. In addition, it's in close proximity to several community amenities, including the Crescent Avenue Presbyterian Church, City Hall, of Plainfield Police Headquarters, the Public Library, Evergreen Elementary School, and Plainfield High School. So in summary, as I just mentioned, there are several criteria that has been applied to the study area that includes Criteria A, which are that the building is in a substandard condition, unsafe and dilapidated. Criteria D, that its existing conditions on the site and building are detrimental to public health, safety, and general welfare. Criteria G, that the study area is within an urban enterprise zone. And lastly, criteria H, that the study area shows consistency with smart growth planning principles. So in conclusion, it's my professional recommendation that Block 837 Lot 1 be designated as near a need of redevelopment. And that concludes my presentation of this redevelopment study.
Okay. Any questions from the board before we go to the general public?
I have, I have a question. I mean, the fact that this has come before us as a area in need of redevelopment. It seems like.
This is a study, Billy. It's not an, we haven't determined whether it's need of redevelopment yet. But just, just through the study.
Okay, the study for in need of redevelopment. As far as I understand, those in need of redevelopment studies are primarily initiated to give some type of benefit to a potential redevelop or a development. And so that would make me assume that the, this is being done with the thought that this property is going to be demolished. And I'm concerned about that.
Peter, maybe you can help me out here. A study is just a study. If you want to assume that there is a developer waiting in the wings, if you want to assume that this is solely being done to demolish the building. You've been around long enough to know, we've done these studies many years ago and there were no developers. And we did a redevelopment plan for that same area and it sat for years. So I can't make that assumption. I'm not saying it's a terrible assumption, but I can't make that assumption that it's being done with a particular developer in mind.
Would I add one thing too?
Yes.
Just very quick. I never use the word demolition in my presentation.
I agree you did not, but you know, from what I understand about these studies, the only reason they're done is to provide incentive for a developer to put up a substantial project. So that makes me think that, you know, that is the purpose of this study. And I'm concerned about that because it is a, you know, national and state historic property and it, I think the city should be doing everything it can to help maintain this property and make sure it isn't demolished and taken apart and disappear from the city.
How would you suggest that the city do that? Buy the building with taxpayer dollars?
I, I have a question.
I have a question as well, Chairman.
Carmen Sider, go ahead.
Yeah. Who own, who owns this building? Who is the owner of this building? Is it the Archdiocese?
I, I don't know.
Do you know, Mr. Martini?
Yeah, at this time, it's, it's still the owner identified as Grace Episcopal Church.
So they've, they haven't sold it as of yet?
Well, we're, we're, that's really not.
That's the current. I was just gonna say, that's the current owner. That's all I can say.
Okay.
I was gonna ask the same question. Is there any plan for Archdiocese? What's the plan for that building from the Archdiocese or is it?
Those are questions that we cannot answer. We can all think it as residents. I think the same thing. But all we're here to do is determine whether it meets the criteria for, for a, for, of the study, whether it meets those criteria. And I think it only has to meet one. And apparently this one met four. But those are excellent questions and I know we're going to repeat ourselves several times because that, that question is going to be asked again and again. Siddiq, you have a question?
Just a comment. My question was going to be, is it a historic building, a registered historic building? And I believe that was answered. And my only other comment is that it is a sad state of affairs at this point in time since in 2001, that was the site of a presidential visit by President of the United States.
I agree. Just as the, even though, whatever its status is, its status remains that. Regardless of what we do tonight, its status remains tonight. It doesn't mean that, that whoever the property owner is cannot come along and do all the things that are necessary to bring the building up to spec. Whoever owns it can do that. Obviously, whoever owns it can sell it. But again, our purpose here tonight is to deal with, does it meet the criteria? Any other questions from the board before I go to the, to audience?
I have, I have one question. I'd like to ask Peter if there's any way we can include in this approval for the study that the property not be demolished.
It's not, what you're doing now is indicating whether or not it meets the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment. So what happens or doesn't happen to the property isn't something you're dealing with now. That would be when a plan was presented. But that's, the, the plan is something that's a city council construct or unless it delegates the preparation of the plan to the board, in which case it would be a planning board construct to decide what, what would be appropriate for that area to try to address the concerns if it were designated as an area in need of redevelopment. So right now, that's not, that, that wouldn't be something that would go along with this. That would be something that would conceivably be part of a plan. Whether you decide adaptive reuse is, is something you'd like to see as part of the plan, that's when that would come into play. If that makes sense.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When we vote on this, as Mr. Martini said, he never mentioned condemning it or just destroying it. It's just in need of redevelopment, which just means it could be renovated or whatever.
Well, if you took what Peter said, and I want to make sure the board is, understands and understands this, that with two things can happen from this point on. City council itself can do a study, I'm excuse me, can do a redevelopment plan. Or they can send it to the board. If they send it to us and this board says within that plan, you have, it has to be, one of the items that, that can happen is reuse. You know, do something with it in that manner. Again, since it's non-condemnation, whoever owns it can, will follow that plan. So if those items are in the plan and this, this board can vote those items into that plan. But it has, you know, so we, we can't be concerned with that at this point. Does it meet that? So the, the next bite at the apple on this is either through council or somebody's redevelopment plan, either the board or council's redevelopment plan. Ninety-nine, as long as I've been on the board, I've never seen council do a redevelopment plan. So it always comes back to the board. And then you can make, we can make comments. We can say, well, I want this use, I want that use instead of this use. And whoever we hire to do that, which, well, could have a large discussion on it. You know, so it doesn't have to be a one nighter. Any other questions from the board?
One of the, so you're saying that the, this, this board here could say we agree with the study, however, it cannot be torn down.
No, no, we cannot say that.
Oh, okay.
We either agree with the study or we don't agree with the study.
Okay.
And so when it comes to the uses, what can happen on that land is a redevelopment plan.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, let's open it to the floor. And please, all questions should be about the study, not about the use, not what's going to happen. And I would prefer that Plainfield people go first. So I see Jeff. Jeff, will you identify yourself?
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Jeff Spellman, 1151 Gresham Road. Grace Church has a dear place in my heart. I've played the carolyn in the tower there for, for different years. I was married in the church. I worshipped there for many years. It's a special place. Some background is, my understanding is the church is trying to sell it to a developer who is trying to demolish. So that is subtext behind all of this here. But I would speak, I would question against some of the criteria about the building condition. My understanding of a historic building of this age, just like people of older age have medical concerns and things that don't look as bright as they did when they were young and things like that. And we've seen some very unflattering pictures tonight. We have put up a website, savegracechurch.org, which is showing the glorious pictures of the stained glass window, the carillon bells, the organ, the things that makes this church essential. And I wonder, like when you see garbage, a couple cleanup days and a dumpster. Obviously, a building of this type is going to have maintenance. It's not unusual for buildings this old to need some roof patches, to need some asbestos abated, et cetera, et cetera. But I wonder that, that I really question that we say that this is a public safety hazard or the building is so bad out of repair that it, you know, it's, it's, it's not able for use. My understanding is the building is structurally sound, but yes, there is good care and maintenance that needs to be done to the, to building there. The other couple of comments there is, it is a historic place. It's got the largest open green space. I'm just afraid any of these steps that go along that eventually turn this into chopped down apartments, losing the space, losing the historic thing. I understand that the church has already sold off Tiffany windows without properly going through the historic board. So I'm, I'm just worried that we're all going to see this thing demolished and everybody's seen it go, you know, to the next step, the next step, the next step, and then say that we should have done something in a prior step. So I'm, I just really urge people to really look at this and see, is, 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 does this need maintenance and cleanup? Or is it really unsafe situation? Thank you.
You're welcome. Holly?
Thank you. My name is Holly Algeo. I am a resident of Edison, New Jersey. However, I attend Grace Church. I am a current member and the wife of the warden. I prepared a statement. It is unconscionable that you are taking the words of the seller's realtor in regards to the status of asbestos in the building and whether the floors are asbestos. They have not been tested and you are following a narrative that is just not true. Page 21, there is limited use of the building for no other reason than the vestry and the bishop have chosen it to be this way. COVID, among other issues, have dwindled membership, but this is still a building that can be used as active worship space or some other purpose, at least for the historical part of the building. Homeless people have been drawn because of the fence. If you eliminate the fence and make it an open space with proper lighting, it can be a city park to keep a much needed green space in the downtown periphery, periphery of the city proper. Neglect by the church is not a valid reason to fail to insist that the church properly maintain the building. Demolition by neglect ordinances are instituted by communities who care about maintaining the value and beauty of historical properties. And this is an area that the planning division has failed to institute a plan that would conserve and maintain the integrity of Plainfield's original planning boards that approved the placing and building of the Grace Church historical landmark, as well as many other churches in Plainfield. Page 21, item four of the last paragraph. There is no proof that asbestos is contained in the vinyl tile. For this age of tile, the asbestos is identified by colored tile according to a website on the internet. I conducted a search myself in the early 2000s when we removed a floor to determine the presence of asbestos. And the search did not prove this colored tile to contain asbestos. The information is confabulation and my suspicion was that as the planning board, you would continue this false narrative. It is unconscionable that you as a planning board are making such statements, or you Martini, in a professional and public document without any proof. Page 22, Criteria A, again, the false narrative, false statement that the floor contains asbestos. This is blatantly false according to my study. Where is your study in proof? There is no vinyl tile on the floor in Nickel Hall. The floor is wood, not vinyl. If the tiles are in fact asbestos, the building must be contained and asbestos safely removed. You cannot just demolish it. I know we're going to talk about that at another time. So you see, you are in a double bind. The building cannot be demolished without removal of the so-called asbestos tile in containment. And if that is the case, then you have done more than half the cost of the repairs needed, needed to restore the historical structure if the developer has it removed. So what is your planning cost to contain, Mr. Developer or Mrs.? This is a devised plan for people to pass the buck after years of neglect by my parish. And there is money in the coffers, $900,000 to maintain the building. For the massive size of the building, which has two very large additions, the sanctuary itself is in remarkably good shape. And for an historical property and the other photos are of very small spaces and rooms and locations and fixable damage. Or just clearing out space of an old basement kitchen that has been out of use for decades. A thousand dollars tops to remove that old kitchen. I ask you, Planning Division, with the help of the HPC, to compel the church mission to conduct the necessary repairs to properly sell the property to a developer who will keep the building for Plainfield and not demolish it as the mayor promised. Likely, it was not his promise to make. You now have in your hands the decision, which I see is based on falsehoods and confabulation. Shame on those who wrote this report. I implore you to get a second opinion on this so-called asbestos tile. And you are still left with the responsibility of having this so-called asbestos removed in containment. I doubt that that will happen. I will stand and watch you demolish that if, if this is the choice that you make for Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Pittis?
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address?
Yes, my name is Carolyn Pittis. I live in Westchester. My father, I'm speaking on behalf of my father Albert Pittis, who lives at 617 Belvedere Avenue. My father has been a member of Grace Episcopal Church for his entire life. My family has lived in Plainfield for 150 years. My grandfather donated the land for Grace Episcopal Church and my family donated money to rehab the bell tower. And my uncle's worked to rehab the bell tower. The Pittis family is extremely concerned about what is happening with Grace Episcopal Church in Plainfield. My questions are, have, were there pictures taken of the bell tower by the consultant who's presented tonight? And do those qualifications for non-condemnation apply to the bell tower themselves? That's question one. My second question is, in Plainfield, have any churches ever been designated church properties as non-condemnation areas in need of redevelopment in the memory of the esteemed group of people assembled today? Is this a unique situation that this planning commission is having to navigate? And I appreciate the delicacy of this and the emotional nature of this for the city of Plainfield. Those are my two questions.
Did, did you, Steve, did you take a picture of the bell tower?
Yes, I did. As I mentioned too, I walked all the way up to the top of the bell tower as well.
Okay, thank you.
And so do, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, we're going to answer both your questions.
No, but the first question is, so do the, do the No, but the first question is, so do the, do the qualifications for non-condemnation apply to the bell tower?
Ma'am, let me, let me, we're not gonna have like three or four questions. All we have to have is one criteria. And it is not, whether it's condemnation or non-condemnation, it's the same criteria. It makes no difference.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to answer Ms. Pittis's question, the, the non-condemnation designation applies to the property as a whole. So it means that the, the municipality cannot use its powers of eminent domain to acquire the property to effectuate any redevelopment of the property.
And the second question, I don't remember now.
The second.
Go ahead.
The second question is, has, have any church properties ever been in this situation in the city of Plainfield, in the memory of, of those of you assembled? Has any other church property faced this non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment?
I'm not aware of any, uh, and I've been on the planning board about twenty-five years. I'm not, I'm not aware of any. Nancy Pivare?
Sorry, they didn't unmute me. Nancy Pivare, eleven twenty-nine Myrtle Avenue. I just have a couple of comments. I think someone mentioned about, I know this is a study, um, perhaps, and I think somebody in the board said something about adaptive reuse. There are a lot of adaptive reuses and I would hope that the board would consider adding that to the study because there's a lot, there are a lot of churches in Plainfield that were ready to be failures and they're now being used by other small parishes and they have rented it out. And it would be great if, um, the addition of adaptive reuse could be put into this. I have a lot of ideas. It could be, there's enough halls there that they can make it into a banquet hall or whatever. And so I would hope that some of those reuses would be put in there. My other concern is there were only three mentions in the study of the Memorial Garden. I'm very concerned about the Memorial Garden because there's many people whose ashes are buried there. And I would have hoped that there would have been a statement in there about that. In fact, supposedly, and I have not been able to establish this as fact, however, United States Congress has a booklet out that says that there's a United States Congressman that could possibly be buried there. That I am not a hundred percent sure, they could have information and error. But, um, you would not want to disturb the ground and I would have hoped that there would have been a, a, more than just three mentions of pictures of the Memorial Garden, there would have been a statement about what should happen to that ground if in fact a developer does purchase it. The other thing, um, the board mentioned tonight, a couple of assumptions. We're assuming that it's gonna be demolished, that the public's assuming this, assuming that. I think there might have been a typo on the study and I don't think that it was done intentionally. However, if you look at the one page, it already says that it's been approved by the planning board on July seventh and I believe that's a typo. So, um, for us, for the public to make assumptions, I think that typo should have been corrected before that, uh, document was put up on the city website. Thank you.
The next person under her is Calorino? I can't pronounce her name. Please identify yourself.
Hello, uh, my name is Chris Joloreson and I live at three oh eight West Eighth Street in Plainfield. I want to speak today on the historical and architectural value of Grace Episcopal Church.
Uh, ma'am, I want you to ask a question really about the study. Uh, this is not the place to get into the historical, we'll be here all night. We're not the people that can do anything about that. So do you have a question about the study?
I don't. Um, I was going to speak about the, the value of his other buildings and what they've been repurposed for and what Plainfield could do with.
This, this is neither the time, we, uh, this is not the time and place for that.
Well, well, I would like to say that a draft contract has been viewed and circulated that does show that the, um, they would like to sell to a developer for five million dollars and it's contingent on the city approval for demolition.
I, if, if you have some piece of paper that says that, fantastic. But again, that's out of our hands. We, we're just talking about the study tonight. As I think you heard, if it comes back to this board, we can have a larger discussion.
And is it a rule that during public comment period, it has to be a question? Is that actually a stated rule?
Yes, that's, that's a rule that I'm using tonight because of this. We'll be here all night telling the history. We've already had the history twice tonight. So we already got it. And there, yes, you're right, there could be, there's a ton of different uses that can happen, but that's not why we're here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just chime in, just for the record, this is public comment concerning what's before the board tonight, which is the area need study. While it's understood by several people who've come to the microphone that the building has a, a, a very long history, um, in, in the city, that, that isn't something that's necessarily relevant to the issues before this board while it's understood. So, um, the, the board does have the discretion to limit the comment to the issues that are before.
Okay, I mean, I, I've been sitting here for hours waiting to get to speak and I think to shut down public who are really concerned about this is, is not right.
Mr. McKenna?
I'm mute, Sean.
Please unmute Sean.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Steve, I just want to make a comment because.
Mr. McKenna, could you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Sean McKenna, fourteen oh two South Avenue, uh, Plainfield, New Jersey. Thank you, uh, Mr. Vanilla. So I, I just wanna, some of you, um, I, I don't even know because the website hasn't been updated in two years. So I don't know everybody that's on the planning board, uh, at, at this time. But most of you, I served on the planning board for, for close to eight years with. I want to make a point about area, the area need of study because it's, it, it, essentially, I, we could make three quarters of Westfield conform to an area in need of study. We could make eighty percent of Donella and ninety percent of Plainfield, on and on and on. The reality is that in the last eight and a half years, nine years, no area in need of study in Plainfield has not had a developer in the waiting. And I will make one caveat to that and that would be any amendments to prior area in need of studies or redevelopment studies in prior years, like the four hundred and fifty thousand lot scattered redevelopment plan that's had six amendments, I think four of which, since I've been on the council, three years.
Hundred and twenty-seven.
Oh, it's a hundred and twenty-seven amendments to lots. But I think the other thing that's important, and, and I'm saying this for my fellow, uh, former planning board members, is that no area in need of redevelopment study has been denied in the last eight and a half years. And no study that has been therefore approved has not had a redevelopment plan submitted shortly after, very, very quickly, within thirty or sixty days. And by the way, none of those have been denied either. So I think there are, there are a couple of things here that are, that are an epidemic in our world in that there's a lack of transparency and there's a lack of fundamental trust in that we know, and it happened at the council meeting, there were conversations about there is a developer in the wings. Literally, is there an application? Probably not. So legally, that is, that is okay to say there's no application before the planning board for redevelopment of this property. But we know there's a developer. We know that entire area has already been set up for, um, for, with a redevelopment plan because I voted against it, um, when I was on the planning board. There, there is no need, there is no need to single out this single lot at this point in time. This is a building that is in need of some maintenance and some love and some support by the diocese, which I'm sure has some cash to take care of the lawn and clean up the building and secure the building from future, uh, rain damage and mold, et cetera. This is not a building that is really in need of redevelopment. And we don't have to look at this report and say that it's gonna fit the criteria because we could make, I, I can make my living room fit the criteria, quite honestly. It, it's not difficult. There, there's no need to approve this report. It's one lot. Now, you approve this report, you're gonna have a redevelopment plan that is gonna literally define spot zoning. You're gonna spot zone one little property in the midst of an entire area that's already set up for redevelopment and hasn't even been underway yet. Let the area develop. Let it take its shape. So my, my request to the board would be that, that you maybe recommend to the city that code enforcement get out there and call the diocese and have them come and maintain their property and that this, this be either tabled or denied. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Gloria iPad, identify yourself?
Gloria Vinkowski, eleven seventeen Woodmere Place. And I, I just, I couldn't say anything better than the previous speakers. I think that we're great. So a couple of questions. Number one, Mr. Martini, is he, does, does he have a vested interest in doing the study? Will, will he be associated with the developer? That's number one. Number two is, well, some kind of connection. Number two, the church has owned this property forever and with the recent increase in, um, property values, they've made a lot of money in Plainfield and they should at least be held, as Sean said, to cleaning up the property, which seems to me to be somewhat cosmetic of, of problems. And the previous, when the previous speaker spoke about asbestos, well, Mr. Martini spoke about lead. Does he have any studies to show that there's lead paint there? I don't know. And yes, and the garbage is, is garbage, easily cleaned up and the place can be secured. So I think we should hold the church to do the right thing. I'm not religious, but what would Jesus have them do, right? And I just feel we should preserve what's good about Plainfield. So I think it seems to me, based on what Sean said, that if you approve this study, it's already a done deal. It's gonna go on to be apartments. So please stop, just put a, a stop to approving this study, to say you need more information. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, is there, uh, okay, Elizabeth? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ferroni. I live at three twenty West Thirty-Eighth Street in Manhattan. I have a question, um, and then I want to say a few things. My first question is, how many people are, are attending this meeting tonight? I'm just curious because, you know, we're not in a room, so we can't see.
Ma'am, please ask.
I can't ask that? Okay, I can't ask, I just was curious because I'm not in a room and I can't see it. Okay. If you're planning to approve this designation tonight, I'm asking that you hold off on your decision today to give the community an opportunity to hire an independent planner who can test, contest the findings. Uh, I'm very serious about this. This is a very precious property. I was deeply saddened when in April of this year, Jason Algeo, the warden of Grace Church, told me that the city of Plainfield government was cooperating with the buyer who planned dismantle the precious Grace Church building. Shortly after this, Valerie Jackson, the economic development director, initiated a redevelopment investigation and the city planner, and, 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 and so, uh, uh, there's been a, you know, you've generated a report that finds the church is in need of redevelopment. In addition, the city of Plainfield is changing the zoning rules so that the ten-story apartment buildings are permitted. This is making some of our historic properties at high risk.
Ma'am, I'm gonna cut you off there. Ma'am, I'm gonna cut you off there.
Well, can I?
We're not talking, you're not talking about the study. So thank you very much.
This is incredibly important building.
Thank you very much.
We are so lucky to have it.
Thank you very much. Jim Spear? I want people who haven't spoke tonight to speak. Uh, Jim? Going once? Going twice?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure he's been moved over.
No, Jim, Jim is there, uh, where he's got his hand up.
Mr. Chair.
He's got his hand up in, in the attendees, I believe they moved up there. He just got moved over now.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I hear you now.
Uh, thanks, Ron. Jim Spear, six oh nine Belvedere Avenue, Plainfield. I, I'm just gonna limit, uh, my time to, 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 to questions. The, the first one is, um, and I'm gonna say them all at once and let the, um, consultant or the board respond. Uh, what, what's the current zoning? That's question number one. Is it part of the, the TOD? That's question number two. It, it, is it the largest open space in downtown Plainfield? I think that's very important to your decision whether you want to develop the largest open space in downtown Plainfield. And the second one is, you know, is it necessary to include the condition of the building in the criteria? Because like the other speakers, you know, I was, attended that church for a very long time and some of the conditions on the outside are due to the homeless population in the town and that was always ongoing. And some of the conditions that are inside are not much different than any other, you know, a hundred and thirty-year-old church in, in Plainfield. It's just an ongoing, uh, problem, the, the conditions of such an, an old building. So that question is, is whether the condition of the church can be taken off the criteria because I feel it should be. And I'll just close by saying, I wish you all would, would slow down on this and let, let the developer come forth and say what his plans are and let the public then comment on it because, uh, it's twenty twenty-two and the reality is in twenty twenty-two, we do not do redevelopment plans in Plainfield without a developer in the wings. Thank you for allowing me, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Jim. Okay, uh, I think everyone has spoken that wanted to speak. I'm, I'm not given two and three opportunities. If you spoke already, uh, you know, that's basically, Jen, did you, I, I think Jen already spoke on that. Mary Bullwinkle, this is the first time I'm seeing you. Please go ahead.
Hi, Mary Bullwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane. Um, I would just like to second, uh, the comments of both my esteemed city councilperson, Mr. McKenna, who also had a long, um, a, a long tenure on planning and knows a whole lot about it, and Mr. Spear. I, I would hope that you would listen to what they say and not make a snap judgment on approving this right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, since I see no, I, I see one more and, and then we're gonna cut it off because it's getting, getting late. Kathleen? Please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Kathleen Nietzsche at seven one six Huntington Avenue in Plainfield. I've lived here my whole life. I am concerned about, um, the redevelopment plan, considering that there was no study done on the actual lead prop, on the property and also the asbestos. So I agree with having this tabled, see if that's actually true. The other thing is that, listening to Mr. McKenna, I want to applaud him for his comment.
We're now.
The first of looking at, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
If you look at this in terms of spot planning, you're setting a precedent for the rest of these beautiful historic structures in Plainfield. What's next? If you say yes to this one, then are you gonna look at the beautiful churches on Central Avenue? Is that gonna be the next, is it gonna continue? So think of what power.
Yeah, I'm gonna end this now. Stop blaming us and saying what we're going to do. Talk to, talk to your city council people, them not to send this stuff to us. It is very disheartening to be called liars, to have my consultant called a thief. You just called, somebody called my consultant and said that he's getting something out of it. Come on, people, we are residents too. We have to follow the laws when we do these kinds of studies. So, uh, the criteria is met. All the questions you're asking now are questions we can't answer, we can't do anything about it. We can be sued if we decide to delay and not answer a proper study. This is proper. So let's move back to the, uh, uh, we're ending this today. It's almost ten o'clock. Uh, you can be angry with me if you want. Let's move this back to the board. All right, we're back to the board.
Can, can, can I ask a question, please, Chairman? Just wanted to know, Steve, um, you know, we've heard a lot of people state that the, the asbestos study wasn't done. Can you clarify that?
Uh, there was an inspection study that was done by.
There was an inspection study that was done by, by a professional inspector that we included details of that in the study.
So testing of asbestos wasn't formed?
I didn't test myself, but it was included, details of that were in the study.
Were the tiles ever tested?
I believe the building was tested for it.
And I'm assuming that you didn't find asbestos, why you would make the statement?
That was in the home inspection study that was done by the inspector that we used for review. I did not test it myself. I can't say that.
I realize that. He's saying that you used an inspector, correct?
It was a study that was done previously. I think it was twenty twenty-one.
So nothing has changed since twenty twenty-one. Any other questions from the board?
I have, I have something I'd like to say. You know, I'm deeply concerned that, you know, all the properties around this particular property have, we have approved some significant and high-density multifamily housing and and this is the only green open space in that area and to let it go away would be terrible. And I think a boat for this study is a green light to demolishing the church.
Billy, I agree with you a hundred percent. And this is, but who's going to do it? It's certainly not, our responsibility is to respond to this. You can vote no if you like, everybody, doesn't matter. But it has been shown through the study, who's going to do it? All of the residents that were online have been talking about this for months. They could have gotten together and maybe said something to the diocese or gotten together and offered the diocese money. I don't know. But to expect the city to do something? Perhaps in the redevelopment plan, we can recommend that that green space be there. It doesn't have to be that way. All I'm saying is tonight, we can't deal with it. But that redevelopment study, which I'm assuming is going to come back to this board, you know, you've been around long enough that that's where those kinds of changes or those conversations can take place. McKenna knows that. So there's where if anything is going to happen, there's where that's going to happen. I wish all of those folks could just send a hundred letters to their city councilperson. Why? Because that was where the decisions are made. We were asked to do a study. If we, the study, it meets for the eight or whatever criteria? And that's it. Any additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to disapprove.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Wait, what is the vote?
The vote, the two of them want to disapprove this and we're leaving ourselves wide open because it meets the criteria of what we have to do legally. So I would, I'm voting no, but it's up to you guys. So they're asking to deny the report, to say the report is not right.
No, I'm only saying I don't approve of the report.
Well, you're seconding a motion that says it dies. There is no study. That's what you're seconding a motion for. Is that what you want to do?
I don't think that's what I'm saying, but.
Well, that's what the motion is. The motion is to deny the study, meaning it's done. There is no study. Is that correct, Peter?
The motion right now is a motion of Mr. Toth to deny, which is essentially, and the purpose of this is to indicate that the property does not meet the criteria for designation as an area in need of redevelopment.
I withdraw.
I was going to say, is that correct, Mr. Toth? That's what your purpose of your motion was?
Yes.
Okay.
I withdraw.
And the motion dies of a lack of second. Can I have a motion? Can I get a motion?
I'm making a motion that the study was good.
You're making a motion to accept the study. Can I get a check?
Motion to accept the study and designate the area as in need of redevelopment based upon the findings.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Been moved to second. Can I get a roll call?
You can. All right, Ms. Tile?
I'm staying.
Okay, Ms. Workman?
I'm sorry, Peter, were you, that was me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Alameen?
No.
Mr. Person?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Toth?
No.
Ms. Exum?
No.
Chairman Scott Ped?
Yes.
It fails.
Yeah, well, there's not, there's no majority vote, so it does not pass, although that's your vote to approve it. So the vote to approve it fails.
Okay, next item on the agenda?
Your next item on the agenda is the amended cannabis ordinance.